I'd like to welcome you all here this evening for our November School Committee meeting. I'm going to start this meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Hope you all stand, please.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
(Inaudible).
I'd like to read to everyone our Danvers Public Schools' mission statement. The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on the Danvers Community Access Television. Is there anyone in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Okay. Then we will move on to items of interest from the superintendent.
Thank you. I have two items in the evening. Just a reminder for school committee that the town's financial summit will be December 3rd at 6:00 PM at Town Hall before the regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting. And then also wanted to congratulate our Danvers High School football team for being Channel 5's high five last week. That was exciting for the football team and wishing all of our teams that are in the playoffs of the tournament right now the best.
Thank you. Any items of interest from the school committee?
Nope.
Okay. The community? Moving on to information from the student representatives.
This hasn't happened to us before, so we're not exactly not sure. But I'm hoping maybe we could go on to information from the superintendent and they may be running a few minutes late and then we could, but we have some other guests from our Thorpe School that are ready to present for us.
Sure, very good.
Okay. So, information from the superintendent. Our first item is our Danvers Pride presentation for the month of November, and I am pleased to welcome the Thorpe Elementary School who are going to present about their sensory hallways and start with Principal Rita Ward and some second graders.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you how the sensory hallways at Thorpe are positively impacting our students. Last spring, Thorpe's special educator became aware of the research behind sensory hallways and thought that all students could benefit from having the opportunity to have movement breaks during the school day. The idea of being able to have structured movement breaks during the school day, excuse me, linked perfectly with one of the major pillars of the district's strategic plan, social-emotional learning. The teachers applied for the grant and were fortunate enough to be awarded it, thank you very much, DEEP, and we were able to install two hallways, one near the main hallway and the other in the intermediate one. Research has shown that small movement breaks throughout the day can help the brain stay focused by providing sensory input. The hallways create a structured movement break, allowing children to release some energy and return to class. They also address the need to move and fidget in a positive way. In addition, the hallways help children be calm and improve their ability to focus better. And finally, the hallways provide children with an active environment where they can take a brain break through movement, skipping, jumping, squatting, hopping, and I don't even have to say stop. It's great. Right now, I would like to share a short video that you can see the hallways, what they typically are used for during the school day. Some of this filming was done on pajama day and Halloween, so you're going to have, you'll see some strange outfits. This is Mr. Kellher taking his fourth graders to lunch. These kids take it pretty seriously. Look at this scooter on. Sometimes they just scoot right into the classroom, like, it's really so fun to watch. Yep, these are, this is the other end of the intermediate hallway where we also have some decals on the wall. One of our special educators, Caitlin Resnick, actually came in over the summer with her daughter, her second grader, and they installed these hallways. It took them nine hours, and I think it was about 110 degrees that day.
Wow.
So, there's a lot of love behind these. And this is the other, the one near the main office. This was pajama day. So, that's, that's a pretty nice break for the kids. One of the things I will point out, this, when I heard about, I was excited to have them, and I spent a number of weeks thinking about, well, how are we going to show the kids how to use these? I mean, am I going to have to do a video? What are we going to do? And the first day of school, the kids just saw them and just naturally hopped and went about their business. So, I said, oh, all that worry for absolutely nothing. Kids know what to do, and they've always been very appropriate, so it's really sweet. So, I'm really fortunate to have some pretty adorable second graders with me tonight who were going to share their thoughts with you about the hallways. So, I'd like to begin by introducing Mia Sticorelli.
I feel wonderful about the sensory hallways because when you are mad, you can do it.
Jackson Donahue.
I feel amazing about the sensory hallway because it makes you feel relaxed when you are mad.
Luke Lahey.
Hello, my name is Luke Lahey. I feel good about the sensory hallway because it is a good activity that gets your body going.
Lila Ringhoff.
Hello. Hello, my name is Lila Ringhoff. I feel nice about the sensory hallway because it makes you feel calm.
Madeline Chaffavone.
I feel happy about the sensory hallway because it gives you time to think if you are sad.
Bryn Sherman.
Hello. Hello, my name is Bryn Sherman. I like the sensory hallways because if you have a lot of energy, you can get it out.
Okay. They're ready to take questions if you have any.
Excellent. Questions? Arthur?
I don't have any questions. I just want to put one of those in my office.
(Laughter).
My crowd.
There you go.
I'm good, thanks.
I was actually at Thorpe School this morning for a Danvers Cares meeting, and I saw the hallway where the second video was, and I thought it was really cool, but I now wish that I jumped through it like you guys did because that looks like so much more fun than walking right down the hallway, like a regular hallway. And then my other question is, I, sorry, I didn't get your name, the young man, the tall young man right there, I want to know if I can borrow your bowtie sometime. Very cool. I got a laugh too. Great job. Jeff?
Yeah, I know, I have nothing funny to say. I wish I had a joke or something, but, I know.
I laugh at you anyways.
Yeah, I know. This is my look, that's why. No, but, so that is great, and this was installed when? At the very beginning of the year, and so...
Yes, it was installed in August.
So, how many times, so every time you go in the hall, do you do this, or do you just do it sometimes, or whenever you feel like you want to do it, when do you do it?
You want to do it.
Yeah, I do it.
It's very natural. I'm just amazed by it, really. Some kids walk by it, some kids do it. It's, you know, it doesn't make them silly or doesn't increase the activity, actually, like, comes down, come down, and they just go about their business. It's really been a pleasure to see the kids use it, and we really are appreciative, thank you.
That's awesome.
You know, it was a deep grant that we were able to purchase this, so we're very appreciative.
Excellent. Glad to do that for you.
I just think the, even a little bit of movement is, I think, enough to get the blood flowing if, you know, the day's getting long, they're getting a little tired, or just kind of, you know, a school day can be a long day, and just to be able to get a little physical activity, and even for three minutes, that sounds like it probably wakes them up for the rest of the day and gets them back engaged, yeah.
Definitely. It goes along with our new furniture that Mr. Taverna is so great to purchase for us, you know. It's all flexible, it moves around, and so the kids are able to do that, too, so.
That's great.
Couple of questions. Do any of your teachers do the hallway with you?
Good question.
Sometimes my teacher does it.
Excellent. Another question, in the video, I think in the main hallway, what, so you do some hopping and then you touch the ground? Is there some...
Yeah, there's...
Duck bobs.
Okay. Yep. Oh, okay. Yep. And do you feel it helps you when you're transitioning from different classes, or from lunch, or...
Lunch, bathroom.
Excellent. So, you like the hallways? Excellent. Very good. You all did an awesome job tonight. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I'll be coming to Thorpe next week, and I'm going to see the hallways, and I'm going to try them, too.
Did you get a video of Mrs. Barry doing that?
Sure.
That'll be next school committee.
Yes, definitely.
For school committee.
No, I want to thank the parents for their support in being here tonight. I want to thank the children. Great job, and thanks for having us. We really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. Very good, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. So, we can take a moment to transition. I wish we had the sensory pathway here, so you could have shown us that.
That's awesome.
By the high school, we have a calming corner, so the chorus room has a chorus corner. The calming piece is also to help them. Wonderful.
I think they're working on a play over there.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, they were so well spoken, and for second graders, great job.
Yeah, I'm not sure I could have pulled that off as a second grader.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our student service update for the fall, and we have our BCBA's here, so we have a presentation. Mary, are you starting to introduce?
I am.
Great, okay, thank you.
Hi. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Alyssa Kostopoulos and Catherine Barry. They are our district's BCBA's, which stands for Board Certified Behavior Analysts. And as the title implies, they are experts in behavior. They also help not only the students, but they help all the staff in measuring our own responses and reactions and behaviors that we have. They have both been in the field for quite a few years, and it is really, we're honored to have them be with us because they're remarkable, exceptional people with wealth of information for all of us. Also, in, besides their day-to-day work that they do, which is helping anybody who stops them in the hallway and their, and their regular caseloads, they're really helping to propel the district towards our social-emotional learning and our multi-tiered support systems. They have really put in place so many things for us to work on to help us get to those things. And with no further ado, I'm going to let both Alyssa and Kath share their work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. Dr. Dana, Mr. Taverna, Mrs. Wormer's, school committee members, and Danvers community members, good evening. My name is Catherine Barry.
My name's Alyssa Kostopoulos, and tonight we'll be discussing social-emotional learning through a behavioral lens. So, who are we? Well, we are both district behavioral consultants.
Like Mary said, we're both board certified behavior analysts and also licensed by the state of Massachusetts in applied behavior analysis.
We both have our Masters of Education and are safety care trainers in the district.
And if you're wondering, we're both demonstrating the thinking position taught in the safety care training in the picture we have here.
Just a plug for us. So, what do we do? Well, we practice, implement, and disseminate the principles of applied behavior analysis. We are trained in the science, which is based upon the theory of learning. The science dates back to the 1970s, where interventions were researched, practiced, and repeated over time with success. We use these principles of ABA to assess the environment and make informed decisions based on data collected during real-time observations. And with staff and families, we aim to identify and change behaviors that may help students live more meaningful lives. And as we go on, we'll dive a bit deeper into our roles regarding safety care and consultation in the upcoming slides.
Okay, so why do we do it? I'm going to tell you. As you're aware, the district has formulated an action plan in response to the increasing frequency and severity of challenging behaviors that occur in the classroom setting. Staff have requested additional training and support for how to best prevent and respond to this climate change in the classrooms. We are small pieces to a very large puzzle, and we look forward to continued support in this area of need. And where do we fit in? So, I'm also going to tell you, given that one of the district's goals is to implement the five social-emotional learning competencies in a cohesive manner, we've developed a resource, as Dr. Tatum referenced, that fits into the tiered system that we're going to reveal on the next few slides. This is a collaborative team approach to identify, change, and improve those socially significant behaviors that we did mention earlier.
So, how do we do it? Given that we both work in different buildings across the district, this guide, this SEL guide that we speak of, is readily available to help staff identify, observe, and change behavior through the same lens as we would. We are both working closely with administrators, school psychologists, social workers, and other vital team members to have this guide and process become the norm when students are presenting the challenging behaviors in the classroom. And through the use of the SEL guide, consultation to vital team members, and training in safety care, we are predicting that 95% of the student population will benefit from Tier 1 and Tier 2 interventions and supports. A big prediction, but we're ready to take it on. So, please take a moment to look at the different levels of support in the triangle on the visual on the board. Some of the schools have already presented how they're rolling out school-wide positive behavior supports, which are shown here in Tier 1. I'm sure you can't really read that from here, but, you know, there are mindful moments that the schools are doing every single school day, taking a minute to take some deep breaths or do some kind of mindfulness activity to get themselves self-regulated. There are a bunch of different strategies that the different schools are using right now.
There's Riverside Pride, and also at Highlands, they have the PBIS model as well and other strategies, such as the sensory halls, which promote movement breaks throughout the day, which there is a lot of research behind supporting the benefit of that in the classroom.
And along with this, the SEL guide can be used to assist in creating Tier 2 interventions for students with at-risk behaviors, so if they need to see the social worker, or if they need a little bit more individualized support in the classroom. And with this proactive system in place, we, as BCBA's, will be able to concentrate on the students in the top 5% of this triangle who would benefit from more individualized interventions.
Okay, so what is safety care? To continue our work within the multi-tiered system of support, safety care targets 100% of the student body. The Behavioral Safety Program has been implemented in the district since 2016. While using proactive interaction strategies and preventative measures, safety care specialists have tools to help increase positive behavior. The curriculum also teaches staff how to de-escalate situations while teaching replacement behaviors that are more socially appropriate. Safety care also instructs staff on how to safely intervene if physical management may be necessary. Currently in Danvers, we have five safety care trainers, Alyssa and I included, and there will be 169 safety care specialists at the end of the school year. This is surely something to celebrate.
So, with all this being said, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight, and we do hope that our work continues to provide everlasting change for all of the students and staff.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Questions? Eric?
Yeah, a couple, really. And initially, I'm wondering if you can walk us through one or two real-world examples of how this plays out. You've given us a good picture, I think, of the theory and what, theoretically, here's what you want to do and here's what you want to accomplish, but obviously without identifying a student. Do you have a particular example of, you know, a case or cases, or the type of thing that you might handle, and how this theory really applies in practice?
So, if we're talking about the 5% of students and we're more involved, we might get called in for a student who might be aggressing towards staff. And what we would do is we'd come in, well, first, we might interview some of the staff members, interview some of the parents, get a real baseline of what, some of the information that we need, if there's any medical concerns, anything that has to do with communication deficits, or any other skill deficit areas. And then we would go in and observe in the natural environment and really look at the antecedents. We'll go through this, the ABCs of behavior. So, antecedents are like the triggers, the environmental variables that precede a behavior of concern. Then we look at the behavior, and then the consequences, which could be anything in terms of the environment, how others respond, if they escape a demand after they aggress on someone, if they get access to their favorite tangible item after they aggress. So, what we look at is those patterns of behavior to make a functional hypothesis of what is this student trying to communicate through their behavior, so that we can then provide a replacement behavior, like, if we find out that it's, you know, the student, every time that they're presented with a demand, they aggress, and the demand is removed, we would teach them how to ask for a break, or ask for help, or try to reduce the demand in some kind of way, but teaching them functional language that might get them the same result while increasing their skills at the same time.
Okay.
So, that's just a quick version of what we do, but that's, you know, we, applied behavior analysis can really work on decreasing the behaviors we don't want to see anymore and increasing skills that we do want to see.
Sure. All right, that makes sense. The other question I had was, how are you, I don't want to say measuring success, because it's maybe not something, but how do you, how do you evaluate whether what you're doing is working as a whole program for the district?
So, we are very data-driven, so when we're implementing interventions based on the hypothesis that Alyssa mentioned, we, with our behavior plan, or something of the sort strategies, we do come up with a data collection system that's easy for, we hope that's easy for the teachers and other members of the school staff to be able to collect data on whether or not behaviors are increasing, behaviors are decreasing, and based on that progress or regression, we can make informed decisions about changing
So when we're implementing interventions based on the hypothesis that Alyssa mentioned, we, with our behavior plan or something of the sort, strategies, we do come up with a data collection system that's easy for, we hope that's easy for the teachers and other members of the school staff to be able to collect data on whether or not behaviors are increasing, behaviors are decreasing, and based on that progress or regression, we can make informed decisions about changing our treatment plans based on the data that's collected on a daily basis.
All right, that makes sense. I mean, I look at this and see, I think, one of the key, one of the slides talked about taking a proactive approach versus reactive, and that seems to be the best way to handle most things, is try and get ahead of the curve rather than being plain catch-up. So thank you for what you're doing. It sounds like it has a lot of promise.
Thank you. We do focus on proactive and prevention. That's primarily Alyssa mentioned, antecedents, and that's what we really try and look at. What can we do before the behavior occurs, you know, the interaction strategies and other things? What can the staff do to basically not have the behavior occur because of what we're doing on the forefront?
I think the de-escalation part is key, too, if you can...
And the safety care curriculum is great because we're really trying to push at least Day One to as many staff as we possibly can, which has so many, we talk for a day and a half about all of the things that we can do before we might ever have to intervene if necessary for safety. But we do talk about, so everybody has the same language. The de-escalation strategies are labeled, it's taught, you teach the staff how to do it, and then we model it, and then we actually have them do it back to us. So when they leave the training, they're competent in that skill area. We're not just standing up and lecturing to the staff, they're actually actively participating in the training as well. And there's a lot of research behind that for, you know, an effective learning strategy for people to really be able to bring it back and apply it to the setting that they're working in.
Great. I think your enthusiasm for the whole program is evident.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Good. Yeah, actually, I had a couple data questions, and so you made me think of a couple. So Tier One and, or sorry, Tier Two and Tier Three, which is roughly 20% of the intervention. So what is the data on, say, boys versus girls, grade level, and then in-class versus out-of-class? So is this all in-class situations? Is it some of it out-of-class? Do you know the percentages for that, for the grade levels, and then boys versus girls?
Not per se. It's very individualized. I mean, it's really individualized.
The 80%, that is the green, where that's the things that we're talking about, the safety care, all the proactive stuff, the stuff in the SEL Guide, and then also, you know, more in-depth interventions that we might be able to implement and support the team. It focuses on all of the kids, so the 80% is the school-wide PBIS, interaction strategies, and plans to really focus on what the kids are doing right and how they're meeting expectations. And we really want to, you know, reinforce and reward those kids who are, you know, meeting the expectations because they're also modeling for the other students as well. So it's a mind shift for people that don't typically have this in their repertoire. It typically might be, you know, a stop that, or it might be something that might be more reactive. But instead of focusing on the stop, don't do that, we prompt what we want to see more instead, with hopes that that will continue to have that behavior occur more in the future. So in regards to boys versus girls or percentages, we don't currently have that data with us, but we'd be happy to look into that for you if you'd like further information.
Yeah. And then is there a trend in grades where there's more intervention needed? Say, middle school, where we, you know, talked about, that's adolescence, difficult time.
We look at a number of referrals each year, and they have increased over time. I do think there's a higher referral rate at the middle school just based on the lifespan, adolescents, all of those changes.
And all the schools filter into one school at that time.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So it completely, it depends, but there's kids that fall, I mean, in all of the tiers. So this is a, our hope is to be able to catch the 80%, to then hopefully, like, eliminate the fact that we might have to reach them on the third level, if that makes sense. So the school-wide stuff is super supportive and helpful for expectations across the setting.
Okay, good. And then, we talked a little bit before, I think, on the last session regarding absences and the percentages in some of the students that are absent. I forgot what the exact number was. Was it 10% or, I don't know what it's...
That's the chronic absenteeism is 10%.
Any correlation with what we're seeing in Tier Two or Tier Three with those same students that are absent, maybe because either they're disengaged or whatever, and this, or is there no correlation between those two student populations?
I don't think we can actually, you know, say that there is or there isn't a correlation, but I will tell you that anecdotally, there is a difference in the way kids respond and react when they're chronic absent. There's a variety of reasons for chronic absenteeism. One of the major ones is anxiety, and so anxiety manifests itself in a host of different ways, and we see it quite often in our behavior, which is exactly what we're trying to address.
In particular, the prevention of the 80% in Tier One.
So when we assess the situation, we try and figure out why things are happening. Why is the student frequently absent? And then try and see if it's particular times of day, or their particular subject matters, or particular teachers, or whatever that may be, and then try and, you know, work with home to try and help with, you know, coming up with a plan to gradually expose the student back into the environment to be more successful. But our lens is to look at why things are happening, and then we can base, we can base our interventions on the function of behavior and why things are occurring, instead of, we'll try this, or we might try this. We really look at, like Alyssa said, the ABCs of behavior and figure out patterns, and then with those patterns, we can make treatment decisions.
Now, the last question that I had was on peer reviews. Do you compare or review for learning from other, say, school districts on the North Shore or in Massachusetts? Are you getting that sort of information, and do you contribute to that as well?
I'm fortunate enough to participate in a job alike monthly. That is, I work outside at another agency where I am able to monthly work with other BCBA's in the surrounding districts, and we do talk about similar trends and things that they're seeing, you know, increases in particular behaviors and things like that. So yes, and I do bring that information back and share it with Dr. Tatum and Alyssa to try and, you know, reconfigure and use the benefits of what's happening there and in other districts and try and bring that here as well.
Great. And I think that will tie into Danvers Cares, hopefully, later today. I didn't plug that or plan it, but it's going to work out well, I know. So that's great. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Dave?
Most of my questions have been asked. My only question is, you had mentioned that you work in different buildings. Where are you, and is that because you focus on that specific age group?
It's more like we just split up the caseload. Like, I work at Thorpe, Grede Oak, and the middle school, and Kat works at Highlands.
Highlands, Riverside, and Smith. And then I also facilitate all of the safety care trainings as well, so that's a large part of my job.
We also have an additional BCBA who's a consultant outside of the district that helps us with high school and some other anxiety cases.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Arthur?
So who are the other safety care trainers?
So myself and Alyssa, and then at the high school, Tracy Ewing is a special educator, and Lacy Pierce, who's also a special educator, and then in the middle school, Anna Corbett, who also is a special educator as well as a trainer, which makes five.
And then what's a safety care specialist?
So those are the staff who have gone through the two-day training, which is all about the de-escalation strategies and preventative measures and all that stuff to help them with interaction strategies and other things to work with the kiddos that they're working with. So if you're a safety care specialist, you have the wealth of knowledge that comes from the curriculum, and you are able to respond as necessary for, you know, to make sure, you know, everyone is safe at school. So those 169 staff will be trained by the end of, it's a progression we've been working over, working on it over the course of, since three years, since 2016, so it's...
How many do we have now?
We will have...
Exactly, exactly. How many do we have now? Roughly, what do we have now?
149.
Okay.
And then after the next series of training, it'll be another 20 more.
And every year, they are recertified in it so that they don't lose their skill.
Do they have to do more training every year?
Yep. So the initial training is two days, and then every year after that is a one-day training, so it would be considered a recertification. And they come back and we, you know, talk about, we review all of the, you know, the subject matter and all the strategies and things like that, and review any of the procedures because some of the stuff, especially in Day Two, might not be obviously as familiar to people because we're using more de-escalation strategies first here at school. So just to review and refresh, all of those strategies are super helpful. And then that's something that we look at at Student Services about making sure that we're keeping in timelines and things like that, and up to the compliance standards of the curriculum, because it is, it is very rigid, but it's rigid for a reason, because they want it taught in small groups where people can be, like I said, modeled, and then have the staff participate, and then have them be competent in leaving. So that's why there's specific groups that need to be trained, and 20 people are the maximum amount of people that can be in a training if we're going through the whole curriculum. But we do have the liberty to talk about the strategies and things like that outside of the context of the two-day training, and, you know, professional development, or in other settings in different schools, to get the material and the strategies out to as many people as we can.
So, and this is just interesting, how it all happens, but so when the people have to come up, so every year they have to be recertified. That's a lot, that's a lot of people.
Sure is. I spend a lot of time looking at a spreadsheet. But I do make sure that, and they actually have a website that correlates with the curriculum and the company. Quality Behavior Solutions is actually the company that writes, has written the safety care curriculum, and they have something called Trainer Connect where all of the trainees are entered into the system. And so I'm prompted when I go in on staff who need to be recertified, those who are in the grace period, or those, you know, those people that are coming up, so I can keep track of who needs the certification or the recertification.
Can I just ask you, without going, like, you don't have to give me, like, a detailed, but how do you, like, how do you, what do you have to do to become a BCBA?
It's a great question.
Like, just, you know...
You have to have your Masters in either education, applied behavior analysis, some field of psychology, and then you have to have 1,500 hours of supervision in the field by another BCBA. And then you have to take the exam and pass the exam, which is a very rigorous exam, and there's only 36,000 BCBA's internationally. So it's a pretty specialized role.
And just for broad purposes here, the job postings for BCBA's have increased, what was it, 200, 200% in the last, in the last three years? Because, like Dr. Tatum says, once you have the service, everybody needs the service. So, but we try to get it out to as many people as we possibly can. But it's hard, because there is only two of us, and so we do the best we can with trying to implement all of these things, but...
Teaching people what we know so that they can make, you know, people are choosing interventions for students all the time, so we share our knowledge about how we would go about choosing an intervention so that it makes more sense for the student.
I mean, it's so important in today's world, so thanks. I think we're lucky to have these people.
Yes, we are.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. Just a couple of questions. Referrals, the referrals come from the classroom teachers, the principals?
So that is actually included in the SEL Guide process. I think the link is actually on the reference page of the PowerPoint. And so you can click on that, and you can see the guide, and then it goes through a flow chart of what the, you know, team has initial concern, and then in-house, they participate in parts of the process. And then in the guide, it takes you, whatever the behavior of concern is, it takes you right to that place where you can figure out why the behavior is occurring, and then what we can do to respond, and then also replacement behaviors that we can teach the kids. So this is basically a document of us, but it lives in Google, and then it also, all the social workers and psychologists and administrators do have access to this as well, and we're doing a lot of work this year to continue to try and teach people how to do this, because this is us in the building when we're not in the building.
So we model this process with the school psychologists, social workers, so that when we're not around and there's an initial behavior concern, it's not like, oh, let's call Kat and Alyssa. It's like, no, let's really work through this and, you know, teach you guys how to make a good judgment call on what interventions would be appropriate depending on the behavior and the function.
And then after they implement the interventions and take data, then if things are not getting better, or they might be getting worse, then we would, there's a process, working with Dr. Tatum and Student Services to work with us to possibly schedule an observation or meet with the team to talk about, you know, further interventions after that.
And then the 169 staff, how are they identified to be trained?
It's a great question.
Do they volunteer, or...
So all of the administrators, I think all of them, all of the psychologists, the social workers are all trained, all the student support aides in each of the classrooms, and then a majority of special educators are trained, and then one-to-one paraprofessionals who work with students that may have significant, you know, challenging behavior, or a lot of the Learning Center staff are trained. So we're really trying to work through the different groups to have the appropriate people trained. The goal is to have as many people contact as much of the material as we can, but that's a work in progress with, you know, scheduling and things like that as well. So I work with Dr. Tatum and the Mrs. Wormers, and also the administrators on picking staff who would be appropriate to be trained.
Great, thank you. And is the staff trained during the regular school year or professional development?
There are some opportunities that we do have for professional development in the beginning of the year, but typically how it has been is that we would have to do it during the school year. Like tomorrow, for example, Alyssa is actually doing a brief info session for our nurses, and then also some, a couple psychologists and paraprofessionals, and then I'm finishing up a Day Two with a group of staff as well. So we try and find as many opportunities as we can, but, you know, scheduling and coverage and all of that is, you know, can be challenging.
We try not to take all the staff from the same building at the same time and derail the whole school.
Yeah, I do a lot of... There's a lot of moving parts to make sure that, you know, everyone is supported, but, you know, everybody needs the training, so it's a tough...
Yep, balancing act.
It's a balance.
Very good. Well, that's all I had. Thank you again for the presentation. It was wonderful, and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing, and thank you to the staff for all their hard work, day in, day out. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kath. Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we do sort of have that patent the theme tonight, as Mr. Kay was saying, so from seeing our students with the sensory hallways to our BCBA's, Alyssa and Kat, and their work with all of our faculty and our students, and now on to our Danvers Cares update. And we have Lila Harret, our executive director, with us this evening, and she will bring us through many of the highlights of Danvers Cares. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Hey, everybody. My name's Lila Harret, Director of Danvers Cares. Most of you are probably already sick of hearing me talk today. Good to see you all again, though. Not the first time standing in front of you all today for most of you, but it is a great opportunity. I do always love coming in front of the School Committee to show off some of the amazing work that our youth are doing here in Danvers. So I put together a little presentation just to showcase some of the, like, the really youth-specific projects that are going on and that we've done recently, and then just to give you a quick picture of some things to look forward to moving forward. There are other components I'm not going to go over that are more sort of related to the community or public health aspects, but if you want to know more about that, of course, just contact me or let me know, and I'm happy to talk you through that. But without further ado, so this year, we had our Fourth Annual Light the Night Purple Community Opiate Awareness Event. I know a lot of you all were involved with that. This was an absolutely fantastic event. It's, the idea is to reduce stigma around people who are facing substance use and addiction issues, and to bring the community together to show support for people who are struggling with that, and also to show support for the families of people affected, because we know that pretty much everybody has been touched by the epidemic at this point, and this is the way that we can all sort of come together and make something positive and stress the positive aspects of hope that go along with recovery. So this year, we... So this year we had over, it was our largest year yet. We had over 300 residents attend. We really put a focus on youth participation this year, which is why this is on here. So we wanted to make sure that this is a full community event. And in the past, we have had lots of youth participation, but we wanted to really try and drop people out this year. So example of that is we partnered with Ingrid Sound to have them come and do a present performance during the program. We also invited sports teams. Actually, you want to flip real quick to the next slide? That's the softball team. They, they came out. And you'll also see the, our very own Danvers Falcon right up there showcasing and really strutting his stuff for us. So the, you know, the idea being to make it, you know, make DHS a part of this event and make this really something that's owned by the students as well. As always, we had our, our Danvers Cares youth leaders there. In addition to that, you know, core group of about 10 students from the youth leaders who volunteered. We had about another 15 who were there for, working for community service. They were friends of the youth leaders to pitch in as well. So it was the, you know, the most amount of youth buy-in we've had so far. They were doing things like running, actually, sorry, Mary, can you flip back one more? There you go. To the, we ran a great kids table. That was a, like a banner that the, that we let the young people decorate throughout the evening. And there's arts and crafts and some long games as well. And the kids did a really great job of engaging the younger, younger attendees. So we tried to really cater to that, that audience this year. Because yeah, I mean, this is an event for everybody. It's, we're not, this isn't something that the, you know, people need to be sheltered from. It's something that we need to bring everybody in on support. So, yeah, so just thanks to everybody who pitched in on that. Recovery Centers of America was our lead sponsor. So big thanks to them. And we had about seven or eight other sponsors from the community too. So they're the ones who also help make that happen. Also, thanks so much to the senior center, the group of women at the senior center who pitch in and make all the purple bows that you saw downtown. Not just on our, on the light poles, but also the businesses all supported by posting a large purple bow a couple days leading up to the event and then the night of the event. As well as posters and everything. So I love this event, not only for the fact that, you know, I feel like it sends a really positive message to everyone in the community. But also because it's a way that Danvers Cares and the schools can, can touch a lot of other organizations that we don't usually work with and don't get to interact with. And if that starts a conversation in which we can talk about ways that we can work together or there's other sponsorship opportunities or just so they get a better sense of what we're doing here in the schools, I think that's a really big positive. Yeah, so, so I'm super happy to be able to talk about the outdoor skills workshops. I, if you, you all were here last year, so you would all know that we, we just started last year our partnership with the Recreation Department. Erica Maruti, who's the naturalist for Endicott Park and myself, were both trained by the Appalachian Mountain Club's Youth Opportunities Program to lead skills workshops and outdoor outings with young people. So we started last year by working directly with the Junior Rangers Program, which is the Endicott, Endicott Parks three-week program at the end of summer. And it went great. We had three really tight lessons that the kids really bought into. So we just, you know, building on the success of that, this year we brought that, brought that curriculum over to Falcon Fun Camp, which is an even larger audience and runs throughout the summer. So they, you know, they have more like the 60, 60 to 70 range amount of participants. So Eric and I, we delivered all the, we actually added in a new lesson this year as well, one on navigation that I'll talk about in a second. But we delivered all four of those lessons, not only to the Junior Rangers, but also to Falcon Fun Camp. So it was a way of sort of taking the next step and trying it with a larger audience as well. You know, and I'd say it's sort of the benefits that we try to impress upon young people with these outdoor skills. You know, obviously everything, a lot of the work that Danvers Cares does is tied into social emotional learning. And if y'all are enjoyers of the outdoors, you know that there's a lot of those core competencies and those skills are really apparent when you're in the outdoors. So, so for example, responsible decision-making is one of the five core competencies. We teach young people about leave no trace, which is an outdoor, a set of outdoor ethical principles that outdoor people need to know. So we also teach self-awareness. We ask people to consider what they're good at, what they, what they think they need to work on. So for example, not tying, right? You know, that's a, that's a hard skill to learn. And it's not necessarily just done by like, hey, you, you learn it one time and that's it. You know, tying knots is really complex and takes a lot of time to practice and learn and get right. And even after you learn it once, you might then forget it and need to relearn it again. So it teaches them to, to really sort of assess their, their skills. And then to know when they need to go back and persevere and try again and learn again or ask for help. Self-management, that's a, that's a big one too, for how to take care of yourself and stay calm in emergency situations. Well, we're not putting the kids in emergency situations, but we can, we can put them out in a situation where we've asked them to do something like find, you know, X on the map, right? Or follow, follow a set of navigational cues to find out where you are, right? So what would you do? What are the questions that you would ask yourself to get, to get yourself to a place of safety? Or to get yourself to your final objective and determine which one is the right thing to do at that point? So also something like social awareness. This is a fun one. As a hiker myself, I know that's really important to be considerate of others when you're in the outdoors. So for example, something like not blasting your speakers when you're hiking down a trail. Or any, but don't blast your speakers. Just don't do it in general. But, you know, that's a really fun sort of touch point to talk to the kids about because that's something that they identify as something that's not cool, right? You know, like when they hear somebody who's blasting their speakers, they're like, well, you can't even hear the music. It's silly, right? So you can sort of check in with them and say, what do you think when you see somebody doing that? You're like, well, it kind of like, you know, ruins the vibe or whatever if it comes out in the park. I don't want to hear, you know, you're blasting, you know, like junky quality music coming out of your phone, right? So allowing them to sort of identify what they think, you know, how they feel about it and then tying that to, well, then what is the right thing to do? And attaching that to that competency makes it a little bit more sort of concrete and tangible and helps them really, it sticks with them. Those are sort of like the memorable points that they, that they take away. And then lastly, I will get to that side of the queue. I'm sorry, Mary. And then lastly, relationship skills. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that almost seems like intrinsic in the outdoor experience, right? If you're going, if you're going with friends, if you're going as a group, you know, working as a team to complete challenges, whatever that challenge might be. If it's to get somewhere, if it's to tie a knot, if it's to set up a tent, which is a big one, right? All that has to happen through those relationship skills. If one person's not interacting with the rest of the team, that can create, can create an issue, right? Right? So what are those, you know, what are the problem-solving skills? When you don't have a teacher, when you don't have an authority figure there to tell you what you should do. No, thank you. Yes. So one fun new addition that we also brought in this year with the AMC is we brought in some canoeing expeditions. So we got to go on two different canoeing trips, one with the, to the Ipswich River and then one to Harold Parker. The Harold Parker trip was led by an outdoor expert from the Youth Opportunities Program. They, one of the benefits of being a member of the Youth Opportunities Program is that you get one supported staff-supported outing a year. Where they provide transportation, meals and an expert with which to sort of teach and run, run activities. So we brought them to Harold Parker. It was an awesome day. The weather, the weather was great. And the, the kids did a really good job out on the canoes. We had a few canoes that were youth-only, meaning that there wasn't a chaperone in them. And I, I really got to give it up to them because that is not easy even as an adult to get a canoe around. And especially if you're being given a specific set of instructions, it can be really challenging. And to see the young people, you know, there was like some flailing at the beginning, you know? There was some sort of bumping into each other, some getting stuck over in the weeds and everything. But by the end of it, we had them all playing a sort of like, I, I forget what it was called, but I say, think of it like sort of pirate ships. Every one of the canoes had people who were steering and one person had sort of like a water launcher. And on the back of the canoe was a rubber ducky. Every, every canoe had a rubber ducky on the back. So they had to work together to basically sort of like keep their rubber ducky away from other teams while their water launcher tried to shoot water at the other team's rubber ducky and knock it off the back. So if that's not a teamwork exercise, I don't know what it is. But it, but it's a way that it makes it not feel like that's what, what they're doing. It just makes it feel like they're, like they're having fun. And what I like about this, and let's, we can go on to the next one. And other, you know, like pretty much all of the activities that they're doing is that they walk away with a hard skill along with that. And, you know, something that I always sort of try to promote is the acquiring of a hard skill. And, you know, you can, you can work on like the social emotional learning competencies and they're all built into this. But the young people are really happy when they walk away feeling like they, they've gained knowledge about something or they have ownership over a specific skill. So now they can go home and next time they're on a camping trip with their parents, they can, you know, help out with setup and feel like that's something that they can do themselves. So there's a lot of self-worth that can be gained through that. So navigation, this is our new one. So navigation is, it's complicated. It's complicated for adults, right? But the, so the way that we sort of tried to break it down was we broke it into different activities for young people where they'd be following landmark-based navigation. So hey, you know, like walk to, find a blue water fountain using sort of like geographical landmarks. And then the older students were using compasses. So we gave them a series of compass headings, taught them how to use the compass and then allowed them to sort of follow that to, through a treasure map. Not tying, that was just, that was another one. That's another one that takes a lot of practice. Next, so the Summer Employment Program. This is our fourth year. I was trying to do it in my head. I think it's our fourth year of the Summer Employment Program, which is funded by a grant from the, they're now called Mass Hire. They were the North Shore Workforce Investment Board. And the grant's called First Jobs. So that is a program that we started about four years ago. We started with two community partners. We started with DCAT and the Recreation Department. And over these years, we've developed new community partners so that this summer we had five different working sites. So we had, we hired teams to work at the Northeast Ark, Danvers Rec and Endicott Park, both through the rec, the YMCA and DCAT. So the jobs program this year was a lot more responsive to the needs of the employer. In the past, we've had sets, set schedules for the employees no matter what, based on what our grant application had been. They can work 120 hours per summer and their schedules have generally been set between nine and two. But for somebody like Northeast Ark who offers a lot of, of their programming in the evenings, that wasn't going to work for them. So we had to be a little bit more flexible. So instead, we, we sort of à la carte allowed the employers to figure out what, where they had the most need and then place a, place a youth there. Another example of that is at the Endicott Park. This is at the Junior Rangers Program. Jennifer, she worked just the last three weeks, but she worked full-time to, to reach her 120-hour requirement. DCAT, they've been a perennial partner as well. That's Bryce Rous, his sister Adrienne worked for DCAT the summer before. So a little family connection there. Moving on, Atlas and Athena. God, this, I don't even know how this has since, it's been since before I've been here that we've been doing Atlas and Athena. But it's, we continue doing it because of it's so successful every single year. This is a opportunity for senior student athletes to mentor incoming freshman fall athletes on a range of different topics. You know, some things like nutrition, positive self-image, performance-enhancing drugs, prescription drug use, vaping. Did I say body image? Body image. And a number of other topics that are really relevant, especially to, to athletes. But could be relevant to everyone. We're looking at how to bring that to a wider audience. But this has been a really successful year with them as well. We had great youth leaders. So I wanted to touch on vaping. People who have been sort of participating in Danvers Cares, this isn't going to be super new to you, but I just wanted to touch on it. We have, obviously vaping is a huge issue right now. We have a number of responses that aren't, that, you know, are not just in the classroom. They're also outside of the classroom. They're about parent education, educating, you know, the community members at large. So here's what we're doing. We have an upcoming presentation to DHS faculty regarding vaping. Sean Emberly, the Vice Principal, is working on that. So let's see, parent education. We have a parent education event coming up. It's going to be run by Ashley Hall from the Northeast Tobacco Free Community Partnership. We actually just set the date for that. It's going to be December 10th. So that'll be an evening program for about an hour and I think we'll do about half an hour where parents can drop in ahead of time and look at a vaping display, ask questions about products and get their hands on them. We are working towards administering the Catch My Breath curriculum to ninth and 10th graders. We are trying to figure out where, where they're going to fit best. We're looking at like throughout the curriculum, through advisory, we're, we're testing out to find the, basically the best way, the most strategic way to do so. The health and wellness curriculum at the high school and middle school, they are already, you know, they're already doing a lot of work within the curriculum. So that's not, you know, when you hear all this, it's not, we're adding the Catch My Breath curriculum because there is nothing in the curriculum. That's not the case. There actually is a lot of really strong curriculum writing. I know that Danielle LaRocque and Jeff Bartlett over at the middle school have a really nice, like, sort of hyper customized, customized curriculum that, that speaks towards vaping and a lot of the reasons why young people might do it. So I think they're doing great work there as well. Student-led projects organized through groups like Danvers Cares SAD and classes like DECA and Project Citizen. I can't tell you the number of groups that I've, of young people that have had come to me saying that they wanted to do something and that they wanted to help impact the usage rates at the high school or even at the middle school level. So my job with that is I support, I support those things. But to have a truly youth-led effort, it's important that we let the youth lead. I absolutely do my best to advise them and give them resources if they need them. But the most successful message is going to be one that's organized and created by them. So I'm really happy to have such an engaged youth leadership. Partnership with the Past Aversion Program. So this is something that's been ongoing. It's not necessarily just related to vaping. But, you know, it's not the positive alternative to student suspension. You guys have probably all heard, have we already heard about this? Yeah, okay. Well, so that's a component. Atlas and Athena, we do directly address vaping and they also talk about the MIA athletic repercussions, which is something I feel like we're going to be hearing a bit more about in the coming months. In that, you know, right, right now you can, you can lose a bit of your season, depending on the number of offenses that you have. So making sure that, that young people are educated around what those repercussions look like and what it could mean for their athletic season. Because, you know, like something like peer pressure around making sure you're there during the playoffs can be a really powerful motivator. I think there's one more, sorry. And then establishing the concrete medical referral procedures to students who express a desire to quit. So we already partner with, the Danvers Cares folks know Lea Forrester and Kristi Harrington from Team 14. They're active members of the Coalition. They help us with referrals. All of our social workers and guidance counselors at the high school level have their contact. I've spoken to all them directly about it. Also, I wanted to, you all saw, see your nice little gift right here. And it's a, it's a, it's a pen that has a link for My Life Might Quit, which is a popular text-based vaping cessation program. So pass this along to anyone who you know works with young people who may be, who may be involved with vaping. This is just a nice sort of low-stakes way that young people can get behavioral health services that's short of going through an insurer to sit down with a, you know, a specific substance use counselor through their insurance. And then upcoming programs, we have our youth, our middle school youth leadership retreat with Project Adventure coming up. We're doing it at the YMCA on November 16th. That's a yearly thing. Our Perfect Pause Pet Ministry Therapy Dogs, they are coming, they just started coming to the middle school last year. They're, they're very excited about coming again on November 21st. That'll be right after school. You can stop by that. The hashtag Why You Matter campaign, which you all remember from last spring. So that is a, that's a yearly thing. That, that's, that's been set up and institutionalized within the school. So that freshmen are now going to be taking, going through the Why You Matter lesson and then taking their, writing their statements and taking their photos in the middle of November. So just in a week and a half. The Danvers Holiday Festival, the, so the youth, every year they partner with East Boston Savings Bank to offer the Santa, they act as Santa's elves during the Winter Holiday Festival. And they also give out drink recipes. This year we're, it's, we have a campaign called Holiday Cheer Doesn't Come in a Bottle, which is festive non-alcoholic drink recipes encouraging people to have a non-alcoholic festive beverage. And we're looking at offering a drink stand during the Winter Holiday Festival as a way of making it more fun. Yeah, Vaping When Parents Need to Know, December 10th. I already mentioned that. I think I already talked about that too. And we jumped down to Marine Internship with Salem Sound Coast Watch. Those of you who were at the meeting today heard from Emily Flaherty. Those of you who were at the meeting today, heard from Emily Flaherty from Salem Sound Coast Watch, we're offering a marine, marine science internship housed at the Danvers YMCA and their new teen center that launches in December. That is, that goes, that runs through March, and that also comes with a stipend as well. So rather than competing against people who, against people's need to, to have a paid job, we're trying to sort of, you know, reduce that, reduce that barrier by offering a stipend as well. And then, and then lastly, this upcoming spring, 2020, we'll be administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey at the middle school and high school as we do every two years, so more on that too.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Lila. Questions, Jeff?
Some liaison, I don't know that I have any question, but I do, I mean, I'll just reiterate what I said before, I do see a lot of parallels between what we were talking about before with the BCBA, right? You know, and one of the comments that you had was the, you know, increasing frequency and severity of challenging behaviors that happen in the classroom setting. And, you know, every time I go to a Danvers Cares meeting, it is so good to hear about the work that we're doing and pulling in other community members to address various aspects of it, whether it's, you know, anxiety, whether it's, you know, I need something to do in the summer, whether it's vape, I mean, kids, I mean, I know they experiment and they're trying to do different things, and maybe hopefully vaping is going away, like smoking and everything else. But this is all tied together, and this is why we do this, and this is why we bring the community in. And so hopefully, there is a lot of synergy that happens when you see, you know, students in some of the programs. But the only thing I would, I would add is, and maybe you do this already, is if you see these themes or trends, if you could bring them back to Danvers Cares, because we just did the entire strategic plan, which is three to five years, how long does that last now?
Five.
Five years, so that's for five years now. But, you know, one of the things that was happening in the beginning of that was, you know, where do we want to go as a community, what are our key themes? And I think having the pulse of, of a lot of those students, you know, that you're hearing from would help formulate that. Maybe it already did, I'm sure it probably did, but, you know, when you kind of get the big picture and you see this all together, it really is, is impressive, so thank you for that. And thank you for the work you do too, by the way.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's really, really good.
Dave?
Like Jeff, I'm at the meetings every month too, so great job, Lila. There's a lot to cover, and you did a great job getting through it all, so thank you.
Arthur?
Yeah, you're not really doing much.
Boofing off again.
You know, I mean, there's not much to say, I was very thorough, I was very good. And I, I mean, and I, plus I've never spent a second in a tent on a canoe. I can't find any place without my GPS, and I can't, other than my shoes, I can't tie a knot, so.
I'll sign up with the rec department today.
I don't want to spend any time in a tent or on a canoe. That's okay. No, you know, we'll say every year, Danvers Cares does such a great job, and clearly you're, you're really enthusiastic about it. So, so, you know, it's just, it was a good, great presentation, a lot of information, there's really nothing, nothing I need to ask, so that was great, thanks.
Eric?
Yeah, I think the efforts and opportunities that you're giving the students in town, young people in town, obviously really great, and sort of, I guess, a wide berth. And I get the sense that, I would think, that these, a lot of the activities are big confidence builders, particularly the things that, you know, go on with the outdoor learning, techniques, learning to be self-sufficient, to know that you can do that, and really give a kid a big lift in terms of what they believe in themselves. So I think that's fantastic. My only question would be, with all this going on, how are the relationships with the sort of other stakeholders in town? And in, on the North Shore, I know that in the past, there's been a strong connection around youth behaviors with the police and District Attorney's Office in positive ways, like, you know, diversion, that sort of thing. So is there still a good, strong partnership happening there?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, yeah, I mean, the chief was at our meeting today, I'm working with the chief on a number of different initiatives, but it's been pretty much, honestly, I feel like it's been sort of easier than it's been in the past, just because of the amplification that these public health messages are having right now in the media. So it's almost like, public health isn't always on the tip of everyone's tongue or on the forefront of people's minds, so that when there are, is a sort of built-in like issue at hand or task to be addressed, I feel like it really galvanizes people and brings people to the table. And then I think that the trick is to then flip that into and educate people about how to make that long-term sustainable change, which is what you're talking about, right? You're talking about, like, I would call it upstream prevention, that, you know, when I talk about positive youth development, when I talk about building self-confidence for young people, I see that as substance use prevention. Because when you, when people have that self-confidence, when people have those positive coping strategies already built in, then something like vaping is going to seem less appealing. And, you know, like you talk to some young people, and they might say that they are vaping because they're feeling anxious or stressed out, or, you know, facing depression, right? So how do we give them those built-in strategies so that by that time they get to being offered their first vape, which they will, that they're able to make the right choice, or that they're able to, even if they don't make the right choice right away, to know and to then eventually fall back on those good healthy habits that they formed?
Well, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Can I, Mary, can I just follow up on Chris? Sorry, I know. The police comment made me think of something else that was in a direction that I think both these conversations are going to, which is the concept of, if you think about the police, most, the first thing a lot of people would think of is, you know, enforcement, and you're going to come down hard on you. Same thing with, you know, BCBA, you're like, okay, you've got disruptive students, you're going to go after them hard, there's going to be punishment, there's going to be something like that. But nowhere in any of these discussions do you, do you focus on, right, that's not what you're designed to do. And I don't know if we mentioned it in our last Danvers Cares meeting or the meeting before, but the data is now very clear, is that methodology does not work, right? And so if you're trying to, and I think we use the term scare tactics, right, and there was this entire, you know, piece on scare tactics. So if you want to try to scare students out of vaping, it's not going to work, right? We've all gone through that, the data is very clear. So this consistent message now, we're beyond just saying, you know, don't do that. Now, how do we take this to the next level? And that entire community is coming together, so it's the police, it's the fire, it's the pharmacies, it's everybody that's doing that, which, which is really, really good. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Quick question, what's the Catch My Breath campaign or curriculum?
So it's, it's a curriculum that is, I believe is created in Stanford, but it's supported by the DPH. It's free to all public school districts. It's, they run from K through 12, but we're specifically looking at their high school-based curriculum, which it's four lessons that last about 40 minutes long. They're sort of like soup-to-nuts, plug-and-go type curriculum, it's really in-depth, and I think there's a lot of value to the curriculum. And I think that what we're working on with the teachers is, and the curriculum folks, is to figure out a good way to, to deliver to our students, and to sort of strip it down and make sure we have the right pieces in the right order, as opposed to throw in, you know, like a kitchen sink, here's everything, blah, 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 you know, how do we simplify that message and give them the most important parts and leave space for discussion?
What's it about, though, also?
Oh, it's about like vaping science, what are the impacts? So there is like an education component, but, I mean, it all sort of moves towards the, you know, like, how do you find positive skills to not end up having to vape, you know, how can you, like, you know, basically refusal techniques, whatever, whatever it is that's going to give you the skills so that you don't feel like vaping is your only option, or like it's the best option.
Okay, great. Quite a bit of work that Danvers Cares does, and this was just what you're doing with the schools. Like you said, there's so much more with the community. Want to thank you, the Danvers Cares, the youth leaders, for working on all these programs, and all of it does relate to, like, the social emotional, our strategic plan, it all comes together with behaviors and everything. And honestly, we're very fortunate in Danvers to have Danvers Cares as a community. So thank you very much for your work. Thank you to the administration for having Danvers Cares here and wanting it in the community. And thank you for everyone that participates and supports it, so thank you, Lila.
Thanks, everybody.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to all our presenters for this evening, we can make a transition to, thank you, we appreciate your time and sharing this with our community.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. So we're going to move to Mary Wormus, we'll make a connection, pull it all together, give us an update from our strategic plan. We'd like to, if we have a larger presentation, we won't have this, but on the month that we don't have a larger presentation, a quick check-in onto what we had accomplished in the last month and what's coming up. Okay, Mary.
All right, so it's a quick update about what we're doing, and hopefully we'll be able to connect some of the dots. A lot of the presentations today, what you heard, was based on our strategic plan. So we have three strategic initiatives. The first one is safe and supportive learning environments, the last two presentations are really focused on, or all three are focused on SEL, social emotional learning, and what's happening in our district. The second one is coherent curriculum and instruction and assessment, and then the third one is engaged students. So as I said, you've heard a lot about our SEL, but I also, what I also want to tell you about is that we have two administrator and teacher committees that are focused on moving the social emotional learning forward in the district. One committee is focused on the adult learning about the five SEL competencies, that's a lot of the work we're doing at our faculty meetings during this time, it's a small component of that. So we have a team of people working on developing those activity, activities and facilitating them at the meetings. So that's one committee, and the second is SEL Steering Committee, which continues from last year, and that's focused on the programming for students. So to think about, we have lots of things that are happening, as you hear, around social emotional learning that's happening in the schools, but now it's really upon us to bring coherence to those programs and have it vertically articulated, K through 12. So that is the work of that committee, and we're starting to plan for school year 2020, 2021. All right, so our second strategic initiative is the coherent curriculum instruction and assessment. So last month, we had our district data leadership team. So each school has a leadership team, the elementaries have teams of five teachers, or four teachers and the principal. The middle school and high school have their teacher leaders that are department-specific, as well as the principal and curriculum director attend. And this is really, we start to work on our unveiling or working on putting together our multi-tiered system of support. So we spent last year investigating that, researching that, and part of the spring and summer was to put in structures in our schedules at the elementary and middle school to have that multi-tiered system of support have a place and have, be able to actually start to implement that. And so we worked with the district data leadership team to go on, you know, to do a little bit deeper dive into the philosophy of all, how, how it might work, give examples of how other districts have done it, and we really worked on planning the implementation back at their schools. So now it's upon them to kind of put that work together at the early release sessions and faculty meetings across the school year to start to implement that. We will meet in March to kind of come back, talk about things that they've tried, and kind of troubleshoot some of the areas that were, you know, that might be problematic. And as you see, we, we have started that, we've, we've put structures in place in the schedule, it's called the Intervention Extension Block at the elementary level, and then the Rise Block, and we've had presentations on both of those and earlier school committee meetings. And so we're starting to think, you know, work on fully implementing those blocks, and I think that when we get together in March, we'll be able to talk about successes, but also challenges that we face in those blocks, and kind of troubleshoot it and get ready for the next school year. And then finally, we have our engaged students. The Essex County Learning Community Grant, it always comes back to them. They, last year gave us a three-part series on multi-tiered system of supports, but this year, they're giving us what's called Universal Design for Learning, and, and really working with us on how do we work at the first tier of our multi-tier system of support to create access for all kids to the curriculum? So all levels, range of learners, and how do, how do we work with teachers so they're able to do that daily in their lessons? So we have a team of 13 teachers and administrators that are attending the sessions, we met, we've done one, and we have two more to go, November and December. And then finally, we have, we had that Project-Based Learning Institute over the summer, and we, we created 17 project-based learning units, and so some have begun to be implemented, others are still in the planning stages and getting ready for the winter and spring. But we do have the PBL Works, who came and worked with us in the summer, returning in December, mid-December, to really help us, like, help reflect on the projects that had happened, and learn, lessons learned from those people that have implemented the units, and then also help continue the planning process and be 100% ready to implement in the winter and spring for the others. So that's my update. I just thought that, given the presentations we had to do today, I might connect a few dots for you. So when you saw the triangle that Kat and Alyssa presented to you, it is a multi-tiered system of support, and they showed one big triangle, which I liken to, like, there's actually two halves of a triangle that are put together, and on one side is the academic side, there's a multi-tiered system of support, and the other side is a behavior side. And Kat and Alyssa talked a lot about the behavior side that they're working on, and that we will continue to work on with them and with administrators and teacher teams. But what we're doing on the coherent curriculum instruction assessment, we've really been focused on the academic side. So this is all, in year two of our strategic plan, this is the work that we're starting to do, is really get those systems in place and to start to roll them out. So there really works in progress, we're really building that foundation this school year, but we look forward to hopefully having a solid foundation as we move into the 2020, 2021 school year. Here's just a picture of our cycle, our, our schedule is to show you that we put those supports in place, but the FAR cycle comes into play in that multi-tiered system of support, because they help us think about what is that intervention that is going to happen in the IE block or the Rise block? And it's the way that we detect kids that might need extra support. So that system, and again, it's all these acronyms, but that system is what makes the multi-tiered system of support work, like, it's how we determine what kids are able to get, are needing some extra supports. And finally, just a quick, this last slide was just to show you, to remind you, if you weren't sure about the FAR cycle and what that was, again, that last slide just shows you what are the different steps that teachers are actually doing to help determine what students need extra support. So it's just kind of pulling it all together for you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any questions? Dave?
Just a question on the scheduling on this last slide. How has the reaction been from the teachers at the elementary school to have the day kind of all scheduled out for them?
Yeah, I think last year, we also worked on a schedule that gave them that, that kind of, they, you know.
Structure.
Yeah, for structure, thank you. And so I think that year was a little bit of adjustment for the regular ed classroom teachers. This new schedule was, was not anything different than what they had realized. What they did get, though, was an extra day of prep time. In past years, they've had four days where they've had prep time, and we were able to, in this new schedule, work out a fifth one. Where we did run into some, you know, some trouble, but we've worked very hard and worked with those teachers as around special ed schedule, and then with the specialists. So they were our stakeholder groups that we really met with in the end of the school year last year, and then the fall this year, to really work out any kind of kinks that needed to be worked out.
Great, thank you.
And I thank, actually, my elementary team of Julie Posternak is the curriculum director, Allison Day is our math coach, and then Tina Marie Shekels, our librarian, and she ended up being a very good, working, both Allison and Tina Marie were very good schedulers, so they really were able to listen deeply to the concerns of some of the teachers and really help make, tweak the schedule for each specific school. So we all worked as a team to help implement it.
Great, excellent.
Arthur?
I'm all set, thanks, thanks, Mary.
Eric?
Yeah, I, looking at the last slide, the MTSS Priority Challenge, of course, people at home really can't see it, but I love the, the positive statements of the teacher commitments, essentially. And as you go further into the chart or the, I don't call it a chart, but anyways, you go further into the process, you see a collaborative piece where the student responsibilities are laid out too, but things like, you know, I will, the very first portion, I will connect, I, meaning the teacher, will connect our learning to your experiences and culture. I will engage you with rigorous and relevant learning targets and success criteria to guide your learning, no secrets. Those are affirmative statements for what is expected from the teachers and what they commit to, they're really commitment statements. And then the student piece, you know, you and your peers and I will take time to analyze your work based on clear criteria so you can improve. It's bringing everybody into the learning process, but there's a positive message in all that that I really like, I like what you're doing.
Yeah, we too, and that's why, just this model really worked well for us, and especially with our strategic plan, where we really wanted to go.
It's bringing everybody into the learning process, but there's a positive message in all of that that I really like. I like what you're doing.
Yeah, me too, and that's why, just this model really worked well for us, and especially with our strategic plan, where we really wanted to go with it. And that's that collective efficacy is the, you know, the Priority Challenge, improving academic achievement through a collaborative approach to servicing students with diverse needs. So this is really, they're all our kids, and we work together to help all our kids.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Jeff?
This is good, and I would say, I really like Chart Three. And we talk about this all the time, but if you would look at Chart Two, like, there's a lot of words. If you look at Chart Four, there's a lot of colors, and Chart Five, there's a lot of gears, but, you know, Chart Three is nice and simple. And I like it because as I was sitting, reading through this, it's the one that I actually studied for a little bit and tried to think what it was saying. And so the question that I have on this is, I like the academics and the behavior, and so you can clearly see, okay, look, these are our two focus areas for this particular part of the plan, for the series of supports. You know, Tier One is the general population, everyone's doing okay, maybe a few bumps, but it's prevention, it's let's focus on what's going right, 80% of the kids. Tier Two, having some troubles, some problems, some issues. And Tier Three, you know, we're going to take a positive attitude, but we're going to try to fix as best we can some problems. The only question I have is on the academics. And we've talked about this before, which is, there is still, I think, an issue where if students are not challenged, or they're bored, or, you know, particularly, I'm thinking elementary, but it could be anywhere too, it doesn't seem to fit that Tier One is the best, Tier Two is a little bit of problem, and Tier Three. It's like, you still need to intervene with students who, you know, are sitting and are already mastering this. Like, I still want to feel like there's something happening. And so that's just where this graphic, I think, if it's not designed to address that particular issue, I think that's fine, because this, to me, is sort of level support. But when I see academics, I'm like, there's still that component where, you know, students always need to be engaged and challenged, like we saw today, right? They need to be active and really into it. And I think that's the part that's, you know, I don't know if it fits on this or not, but I like, that's why I like this graphic.
Right, I like that graphic. We probably could have put different words for Tier Two, but that's why we called the extra block, the extra 30 minutes that we put in for the multi-tiered system of support, Intervention/Extension, because that's where that, so kids get, you know, grouped in small groups, and there's going to be a group of students that need that extension, and that's where teachers need to, that block of time is where we can really push them. There's also time in that, in your regular core instruction where you should be doing small group differentiated instruction, and again, when the lesson has been taught, but we still see, need for a little bit more reteaching, but there's also a group that should be getting some extension, because they've already mastered it, they go on. So this is, again, this multi-tiered system of support, we just get that foundation, but we're really working hard on both ends to give the intervention and the remediation and as well as extending.
Okay, good, good, I like that. Yeah, but I think that particular one, just the graphics, everything just was much, much easier to digest, so thank you.
Great, thank you. I do, I agree with Jeff, I like that, this page, because it does what the BCBA specialists, what they explained, and then what, how the academics is working, how it's all working together. So I thought, like, for me, I totally see both of them now together, so. And we're doing a lot of great work. You folks are doing a lot of great work in the schools, but thank you. A lot of collaboration going on with a lot of different departments, and thank you for all the hard work and the update.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. And the final update for tonight is from Keith for our facilities update.
So instead of me talking, so we just have a quick video of our Smith School groundbreaking.
Sorry.
Ceremony. Mary's ready. She really doesn't want to hear me talk. So it was a great morning that day, and it was really nice to have the focus try to be on the kids most of the time, because it's their school, so to have them get to participate, and to have two students from every classroom, I think was really a highlight for me.
Any questions? Comment? I thought it was a great groundbreaking, and there was a lot of community support there. So it's a very exciting time for everyone in the community, so.
And our next, so we'll have a topping off ceremony when we go to put the last piece of steel into the building, so that'll be our next kind of milestone. And for that, every, the goal is every student in the school will have the opportunity to sign the steel beam before it goes in.
Next month.
That's correct. Next one. An expedited project.
That's awesome, very good, thank you, Keith. Unfinished business. The MASC Resolutions and Conference is, well, the conference is starting on Wednesday and goes through Saturday. Last month, we talked about the resolutions. Anyone have any additional comments for them? Dave will be presenting with Keith on Wednesday at about 1:30, and you're presenting on Flexible Learning Environment? Is that the name of the?
Spot on.
Yep, so thank you for doing it, and I'll also be attending the conference as well, and looking forward to it. And it's also a joint conference with the M.
MASS.
Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents.
Yes.
Joan Lovely, it was announced Joan Lovely is being awarded a Legislator of a Year Award from the MASC. So that's happening one of the days, I'm just not sure which day. So congratulations to Joan for all her hard work with the education, so. All right, new business.
Thank you. We do have a homeschool proposal for this month, and we actually may have one for next month, too. The superintendent recommends the approval of the Notice of Intent for Homeschool Education for the 2019-2020 school year as enclosed.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? That's been approved.
Thank you. So for our out-of-state overnight field trips, the superintendent recommends the approval of the out-of-state field trip for the DHS Model UN to Providence, Rhode Island, November 23rd and 24th, 2019, and for the Danvers High School Ice Hockey to Providence College, Providence, Rhode Island, December 6th to the 8th, 2019.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Field trips pass.
Thank you. And our fundraising for this month, we have, the superintendent recommends the approval of the DHS hockey team's fundraising request.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the fundraising request pass.
Thank you.
Order of business.
For Communications, we have our North Shore Education Consortium. The month of October is when we have our annual audit, and we did review that at last week's meeting. It was a clean audit, and as soon as the final report is together, we'll be sharing that with each of the school committees.
Thank you. Legislation. Eric?
I have a report from Representative Spiliotis's office. The House and Senate both passed versions of Chapter 70 reforms that include $1.4 billion in new funding, formula reforms, data and accountability changes. The differences between the two bills going into conference is that the accountability and reporting standards in the House version are a little higher than those in the Senate version. Conference Committee has been convened to hammer out the differences, where her final version is voted on and sent to Governor Baker. And then he attached, basically, the financials, which show, let's see, that last page, there with me, I'm sorry. Essentially, just as an example, right now, our Chapter 78 for fiscal 2019 is $6.8 million. And without any changes at all, by the year 2020, it would be something like $7.7 million, but with the change, this is just for Danvers, and with the changes by fiscal year 2027, when Arthur and I are 66 years old and still sitting up here, $9,200,000. So over the long haul, the bill has the potential to give Danvers and other communities much more resources to, for Chapter 70 money to help with what we're trying to accomplish. So, and even in the short term, you know, it's an increase, say, for next year of about, it looks like $300,000 or $400,000, and every year after that, it just keeps going up. So it's, it's good increases for us and for other communities to help. Not that money is the only answer in education, but given the sometimes rather stark differences between resources in different communities, it really can make a difference in this case to sort of level the playing field. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Deep Subcommittee Updates. Deep, Deep held their wine tasting October 24th. I'd like to thank the community for coming out and attending and supporting. Final numbers haven't come in yet, but we certainly will be able to continue teacher grants this year. Our monthly Deep meeting will be Wednesday, November 13th, at Thorpe Elementary School. We're going up there, and we're going to have a presentation on the sensory hallways and their makerspace, so looking forward to that. And we thank Principal Ward for having us. And that's it for Deep. Danvers Cares, which we just had an update, but do you have anything else, Jeff?
No.
CPAC.
The meeting is this Thursday for the Basic Rights, Parents' Basic Rights, and the Understanding the IEP. So this is the one presentation that is required by law that is through the Federation on a yearly basis.
And you don't have to have a student that's in special ed to attend this meeting, so it's open to the whole community. And again, they have a nice Facebook page as well that shares a lot of different information for local events around in different communities, including what's going on with CPAC here in Danvers. Policy.
We haven't met. We will be having the, our follow-up from our first meeting from this year, really looking at our handbooks and taking an opportunity this year to really clean up some of the pieces with a lot of the work through the strategic plan, and then some pieces that, and we did this with our, I remember this from the guidance from school committee of looking at, we used to have reports that would come in seven different ways from different seventh schools. So now the same with our handbooks, where middle school, elementary, high school are not always as consistent on some of the pages, that could be. So in working with Dave and Arthur, we'll be working on that, but the administrators will be looking at that over the next month.
One other thing we might want to look at, we had a wellness committee meeting a week or two ago. We might need to make some tweaks to that policy, given the change in the curriculum at the high school level. I don't think it's major stuff, but something to consider.
Thank you.
Great, Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
The October meeting was actually scheduled the same night that trees were coming down and power was going out, so that was canceled. The committee itself, we continue to work on the, they continue to work on getting ready for the Mount Luther King Day celebration and working with the school administration and whatnot, and I'm sure that this year's event will be exciting and educational, and there'll be artwork and all sorts of things to enjoy, so. That'll be here before you know it, really, given that it's already the holiday season.
Crazy. I know, November. Thank you. Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the minutes from the October 7th, 2019 regular meeting be approved and released.
Second.
Any further discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Minutes pass. Okay, Budget and Donations.
In front of you, the budget report for the month of October. We remain on budget at the moment. We are continuing to analyze our special education tuition out numbers with some move-ins and changes of placements, but we'll have some more information for you next month once we're able to get through some of those details a little bit better.
Fiscal year 2021 budget policy draft.
In your, attached to your agenda is the draft policy. It remains largely unchanged from last year. The only change was under the capital improvement program, where last year was to develop some policies. Those policies were completed last year, so that just one sentence was removed from this document. If you have any feedback, we're happy to pass that along to the Board of Selectment.
Is there a date by which that needs to be done?
I'm not sure if they're doing it. It's December, so I'm not sure if it's December 6th to the 17th, but I'm guessing it's probably the 6th.
Any questions on that? Comments? Okay, Personnel.
Attached is your Personnel Report as well, a few leave of absences, and then some miscellaneous appointments.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Any other business this evening? Anyone? Nope. Our next meeting is December?
9.
9, here at 7 o'clock. So I guess we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Great, thank you, and good night, Danvers.